Good morning, everybody, and welcome to July 8th, 2020 informal meeting of the Planning Commission. And so, we're going to get started today with our agenda, and our Planning Director is going to, Bobby DeHan, is going to lead us off in what is in front of us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We had a long discussion in City Council yesterday on some short-term rental items, and as you know, today, we'll be handling a workshop at around, starting around 2:00 PM. Hopefully, we can, the items can be wrapped up by that point in time, and we'll have our workshop on the short-term rental regulations at your spaces. You have folders with some pertinent information, with maps, the referred ordinances, as well as the language, and 241.2 for short-term rentals to help us with discussion. Kevin, myself, and Ms. Wilson will lead kind of the discussion, and we'll just try to succinctly go through each item that we're aware of, and then cover anything that you think that we need to handle. Other than that, we had a handful of items, or two items, get denied, oh, no, one item get denied by Planning, by City Council yesterday for a short-term rental. That was one that was operating between the March 11th Planning Commission hearing and now, and had some significant issues. And then also, there was another one that was deferred due to some confusion on which applications. As you know, we have a couple of these overlapping, and I think one of the council members saw one of the other applications that you heard a couple of weeks ago, and not the one that was, was in front of them. So, we're doing our best to keep up. We're still hearing items, short-term rental items, from March 11th with City Council until the end of July. That's how, that's how backed up City Council is. So, we're working through it, and we're trying to take bite-sized chunks each time. So, if you hear anything from any applicants, or they're concerned, that's, that's where we're at with some of those items, and we are in contact with them, so. We'll go ahead and move to the Planning Commission Design Award nominations. I'll give it to Jonathan for our discussion.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Bobby. Good morning. Commissioners, I'm here to bring forward the 2020 Planning Commission Design Awards. Go to the next slide, please. Here is the Design Awards' purpose. Again, it's to recognize outstanding quality of the built environment. Next slide. Here are the awards categories, and in parentheses are the number of nominations that we will look at today. We had eight nominations come forward. Next slide. There are two types of awards that you can offer, these nominations, if you choose to do so. The Honor Award for Superior Development and Execution, and Merit Award for Exemplary Development and Execution. So, the honor, of course, is the strongest category there. Next slide, please. And our fir-, our first category is Residential Development. I'd like to go through all nominations in each category, and then, we can discuss if you choose to present any of these nominations as winners. Next slide, please. First, Mezzo Apartment Homes are located at 305 Mezzo Lane. There are 282 studio-to-three-bedroom units in 10 buildings. The design is defined by modern colors and lines, and a state-of-the-art clubhouse and community amenities. Next slide. Straight lines and dark brick colors contrasted with wood tones contribute to the modern design in the clubhouse and throughout the complex. Next. And so, this is the only item in the Residential Development category. Would you like to discuss, if you'd like to give this an award?
It looks beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Most definitely.
Yeah, I think, I mean...
So, what type of award would you like to?
Go back to the photo. Thank you.
The photo?
The photo is of the site.
It's an upscale apartment. I like it a lot. I mean, it, yeah, it came out real well.
It's 100% leased, buddy.
Kevin worked on the, Kevin.
He was waiting for this, too, in there.
I heard it is leased up immediately. 100%.
So, you're thinking an honor award for this?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Everyone agrees with that?
Mm-hmm.
Can I just make one point, just to be clear? I agree with that.
And that is, the thing I like about this project is, it's different. I mean, there's too much product that's all kind of looking the same out there, and they did something that's original, with the, the modern feel, the different, you know, the wood tones, and the different textures and colors like that, and that, that, I think, is what, is really what merits an award, is some creative, original thinking, which, frankly, we need a lot more of in residential development around here. Thanks.
Yeah, great. They're all starting to look the same, the apartment buildings. It's the same design.
Same, same thing. They're quality apartments, but they all look the same.
The buildings look alike.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on that? All right, thanks. Next is Commercial Development. Next, please. Cantina Laredo is located at 4505 Commerce Street. The 8,000-square-foot restaurant offers authentic gourmet Mexican food and drinks, seats 250, and is located at Town Center on the second floor between retail and apartments above. The island bar ceiling became the focal point of the space, and has a long, ondulating ribbons of decorative wood beams. Along the front of the building is a revolving door that leads to the restaurant to be greeted by a backlit Onyx Hostess station. That's on the right side of this picture. Next slide.
Hey, can I question, question?
Sure.
Are we, I mean, are we just focusing on the restaurant? Are we focusing on the whole building because there's commercial below also, or?
Just the restaurant was permitted.
Have we done it before?
We just go off of what's nominated now?
Okay, I'm just curious. I've never seen, like, a business like that done before. But that's fine, I'm just, I've never seen one.
Sure. Because that block really turned out fantastic.
Oh, yeah, it's great. It's beautiful. Okay, just curious.
But that's a good point. Next slide. The second item, next in this category, is Steel Headquarters located at 536 Viking Drive. The new headquarters building features the Steel Experience Museum, Concept Store, and a 300-seat auditorium, various labs and offices. As an homage to the use of the chainsaw, the interior features accents of roughsawn and weathered wood accents. Next slide. These include a barnwood wall cladding of the exterior lobbies on upper floors, live-edged wood counters in the break rooms, reclaimed wood for the executive conference room tabletop, as well as the lobby tile floor with a weathered wood finish. The entire project exemplifies both Steel's and the design team's environmental stewardship philosophy. While it would have been less disruptive and less costly to locate the building adjacent to the former administration building, doing so would have required the removal of mature trees. The project also included extensive stormwater management features and vegetated, and a vegetated green roof to an extensive bio-remediation area and retention pond. Next slide. So, we have these two nominations in the Commercial Development category. Any discussion on this?
I like this. I like this Steel one, too. I do, too. Yeah. And they put a lot of, and they put a lot of thought into it. They didn't remove the trees. They did the, you know, I mean, they sort of incorporated everything that you all encourage, I think, in that, in the development of that building.
Okay. Would you like that to be an honor award for Steel?
Yeah. We all think?
Yeah.
Should we give an award for margaritas? They're really good there.
No, we can't give an award for margaritas.
All right.
Those margaritas are really good there.
Next.
You can take us all in trees.
Excellent, thank you. Next slide, please. Then we're moving on to the Renovation category. Bobo's Fine Chicken Restaurant is located at 3139 Shore Drive. The project transformed a former 1950-style Charlie's Seafood Restaurant into Bobo's Fine Chicken Restaurant. The exterior of the building is outfitted with sleek aluminum rain canopies, accessible and enhanced entrances, and a neon sign to create a reminiscent beacon to the restaurant. Old wood floors were rehabilitated. Next. Tables in the lobby area utilize black walnut planks from the Eastern Shore, Virginia. All of the work was done with a sensitivity to the reminiscence of the old restaurant and townhome, Virginia Beach. Next slide. Wilson Beach House is located at 10983rd Street. The goal was creating a transformative and distinct addition on the rear of the house while maintaining and respecting the simply stated existing house. Next slide. The galley-style kitchen was opened up. A new stair was added in the addition that leads people to the second-floor private master suite, a bunk room on the third floor, and out to the roof deck. Next. So, we had these two renovation nominations. Is there any discussion?
I have, may I have a conflict with Bobo's because I have had a lot of chicken sandwiches.
So, you think you're spending more than?
Hey, I had a lot of margaritas.
Not proud of it, but they're really good sandwiches.
I'll have to try it.
This is, is this a new category, or something new? Because I don't remember.
We've had renovation and adaptive reuse as one category in the past two or three years, so I just pulled it out as renovation.
Okay. What about, I mean, have we done anything for 525 Apartments, when they renovated the old Kempfville High School?
I don't think so, no.
Oh, you did. We should do. I want to say we did.
Did we do that?
Yeah, but it was some years ago, it was like, three years ago.
Oh, did we? Okay, I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah, I believe we did.
I guess, that slipped my mind.
Not to be a skunk of a garden party, but I don't think either one of these qualifies for an award, very frankly. There's just a building renovation, for crying out loud. It looks like a...
Well, it's called renovation.
Well, I know, but it doesn't, but it doesn't, there's nothing, I don't, I don't, it's just architecturally, it's not the kind of thing where you go, gosh, this is something we got to wear on our sleeves, it's really fantastic. Both of them are just, you know, run-of-the-mill renovations, in my view, very frankly. I don't think they're, they're meritorious of either award, frankly.
I mean, that's why it's about 525. That's, that would be a renovation.
Just because something's nominated doesn't mean it has to have an award, and I think we need to make sure that the bar is really, there's a real bar there of, of real excellence for where we're handing out awards, and those are fine, but they don't strike me as things that are, that meet that test.
I don't know, I'm kind of sentimental about Bobo's. I mean, it's old.
Architecturally.
It's, I mean, architecturally, but he could have leveled the building. He saved it. It's been around since before I have been, and I'm no spring chicken, and, um, no pun intended. And he's, I mean, it just, I, I mean, I guess if you're going to do renovations...
What about a nomi-, what about a, not a goal, but whatever?
A merit award?
Yeah, a merit.
I mean, I just, it's just two old families in Virginia Beach that have been around for generations, and Mae Henry's Chicken recipe, and...
Well, you know, what would be interesting is if we could see what was in there.
I know you don't.
Previously, like, what it looked, I mean, we see the outside, but we didn't see the inside of it, the old, like, the previous, what it looked like before.
I mean, I think you did a good job on, on Bobo's, you know, questions, but, um, I'm not surprised if...
He didn't, he didn't change anything.
There aren't any, you know, better, um...
Yeah, but you just said he did a good job. All right, we're giving awards for good jobs?
Right.
Okay.
I don't, I'm, I'm with you.
I mean, I mean, he didn't change anything.
And I'm clear today, we're not giving awards for, because we're a nice old family either. I mean, I think...
No, I'm just...
Their criteria is its impact on the built environment. If you go, and I'm on this part of Shore Drive, gosh, I don't know how many times a week in front of this place.
I was there yesterday.
Nobody's going to drive past that place and go, holy moly, look at that, that's the coolest thing I ever saw, or something. I mean, it's just not...
What can you do, if you will, if you're local?
There's eight, eight billion people going up and down Shore Drive, I just can't imagine that's catching a lot of eyes.
One thing, one thing that's interesting there is that they did submit, so somebody knows that there are awards that are given out by the city for renovation, so I guess it was architectural company. Architectural firm that put that, put that package in, that actually submitted the, the application.
I'd have to double-check, it's, I've got that, I don't have it printed out. But we will recognize all of the parties that were part of the application, if they are awarded a nomination. We'll have them listed on the screen, the firm, the engineering, so forth.
That's right, because they come in, and we actually...
Right. In September, right. We'll have them come in. All right, so we've had a bit of discussion here. What do you collectively think on Bobo?
I, I'd give her a merit, if y'all will.
Nope. One and one.
Anybody else?
I mean, Jack, what do you think?
They, they felt that it was, that it was worth applying for, so there's, it may just be the same architectural company submitted for all of these, who submitted all their projects for it.
I don't know.
It could be, it could be all these projects are just one architectural firm.
I don't care.
I mean, it's up to, John?
Well, I'm going along with the merit for Bobo's. I, I'm very familiar with it in its former state. It's a lot better.
Exactly. Rob, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, and it's enhancing the corridor. Merit.
Okay.
The, the other one just seems like it kind of, I don't know. I don't agree with that picture.
I don't think they changed it much.
No, it's, it's... Looks like they did a great job, but, you know, I kind of concur, that there's no...
Yeah.
All right, I think I've heard you on that being a merit award. Thank you. We'll go to the next. All right. Public Facilities is the next category. Sea-Tac Elementary School Urban Garden is located at 912 South Birdneck Road. The community garden was a widespread effort calling for support from all areas of Virginia Beach. From the philanthropic arm of Pharrell Williams' organization, I Am Other, the organization was looking for a way to give back to the students of Virginia Beach City Public Schools Community as an element of the Something in the Water Festival, and continues to support the garden with annual maintenance funding. Pharrell Williams attended Sea-Tac Elementary School as a child. In 2019, the, the garden received a complete overhaul from various donors. A student-driven design charrette included the students of the Garden Breakfast Club, who were already involved in taking care of the garden. The next design tripled the garden space and included edible tree species, pollinator shrubs, and an improved arbor gateway, an outdoor classroom, a new greenhouse, a gathering circle, compost bins, and various decorative artwork pieces. Harvested fruits and vegetables will be used in the school's cafeteria. The 30 plant beds continue to generate produce throughout the summer months, and the students, parents, and garden volunteers can harvest the crops and enjoy the fruits of their labor. Next slide, please. So, we have one nomination in the Public Facilities category. Any discussion on this?
What do y'all think?
I mean, I kind of think it's a good thing for the, for the merit award, and again, I'm trying to think of where there's another one of these in the city. I mean, it's original, and it is an enhancement to the built environment within that school. It's an unusual piece of the puzzle that you don't often see. You just don't often see that. I think it fits.
I think it's great that the kids were involved in it.
I do, too.
I hope all of what you said is true. Are people harvesting that, or are they all just a bunch of weeds right now? I bet $100 bucks it's all a bunch of weeds right now.
It's a dandelion farm right there.
Yeah, with virus situation right now, yeah.
But it still is, yeah.
It's a good concept, it's not going away. I mean, they, they built it, it's, it's going to be there.
Yeah, I think it's worthy of...
I agree.
A merit award?
Definitely.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? I'll put it down as a merit award. Thank you. Our last category is Sustainable Development. Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation Administration Building is located at 2154 Landstown Road. The goals behind the new administration building were to provide a healthier work environment for city employees, align the department's commitment to a sustainable future, and provide the community with improved access to programs. The location of the new administration building was deliberately selected to maximize existing sightlines and to take advantage of the unique park setting. The building's footprint stretches and protrudes out like, into the site like fingers from a hand, creating pockets and courtyards which preserve existing trees, provide areas for gardens and outdoor community spaces, increase viewing angles from the interior out to the site, and introduce daylight into the core of the building. The facility incorporates a number of sustainable design strategies such as the stormwater management through rain gardens, a geothermal HVA system, and many others. One of the more interesting recycling efforts was to use the crushed concrete from the demolition of the original building as the stone base for the new parking lots. Parks and Recreation is pursuing LEED Silver Certification for this building. The building's heating and cooling system was selected to complement its carefully-designed building envelope. Beneath the parking area, 70 geothermal wells act as a heat exchanger to dissipate heat in the summer and absorb it during the winter. To keep solar gain to a minimum, specialized glass was selected. Exterior solar shades were designed with horizontal blades that block light during warmer months but permit daylight during cooler months to promote passive heating. HRSD Headquarters Building is located at 1434 Air Rail Avenue. The Hampton Road Sanitation District, or HRSD, engaged a design team to evaluate the development of a sustainable landscape management strategy at the corporate headquarters. The design consultant was instrumental in HRSD's decision to employ grass and meadow management maintenance policies in drainage swales, rain gardens, and campus greens. Meadow management has resulted in a beautiful stormwater management features covered with wildflowers providing habitat, erosion control, nutrient management, pollutant mitigation, storm system relief, and a reduction in the annual budget for landscape management. The main entrance incorporates a plaza, stairs, seating, and sight lighting to announce the principal building entrance that creates a direct link through the managed meadow feature. As a result of this project, HRSD has changed their entire landscape management process, which has reached all of their sites in the tide-water area. And that concludes the two categories in the Sustainable Development section. Are there any comments or discussion?
I, I believe both these buildings could use a merit. I don't know if you guys have been to the Parks and Rec Building? It's beautiful. I've been there for a couple of meetings there, and I've actually worked on the HRSD building, too, so what they've done out there on both those are very nice. I would say a merit on both of them.
I disagree. I would give an honor to the Parks and Recreation Building.
Oh, no, that's merit.
That's, that's what I have, that's the top one, is honor.
Oh, it's honor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, honor. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, honor.
That's what we have in mind by excellence in design, not, I'm not repainting a chicken joint.
I'm sorry.
I mean, this is the kind of thing that I think that, that we have in mind for when we give out awards for stuff. Look at the interior and all of the features that he rattled off, the geothermal stuff and all that. Now, that is an enhancement to the built environment, as I say, not repainting a chicken joint, but actually a real distinctive building.
Hopefully, it raises the bar.
That changes, yeah, no doubt. And that, to me, is a special, is a special design, and the execution of it, I think, was great, but you guys like chicken joints, so probably, probably disagree.
Do two different things. Don't pick a part.
You sell a sandwich there.
And, well, this thing, is this just a, what, what did they do to the building? Did they do anything to the building?
They didn't, no, they didn't nominate the building, it's just a management.
What, they just, was it just stormwater management?
Yeah, basically.
They just changed it?
Well, the, the key for sustainable is, is utilizing more natural stormwater management. So, this is a difficult, and Mr. Wall can probably chime in as well, but this is a very difficult design and a, a thing to maintain in, in this fashion because of how it's, because of where the water goes. Essentially, you daisy-chain all the stormwater together to go through all these things, and it has to maintain, it has to continue to work. We do strive for people to develop in this fashion, but we do understand it's not easy, and it takes up a lot of space. So, they, they ended up using up a lot of their extra area to do a different type of stormwater management here, so...
Which is great.
Again...
It means they recognize those efforts. Yeah, yeah.
And that gets set to buy a bar higher, too.
It's very aesthetic. It's sustainable. But I think it would be worth a merit, it's not necessarily a honor.
Not an honor.
I agree.
So, honor for the Parks and Recreation Building?
A merit for this one?
HRSD.
All right. Everyone is good with that, it sounds like?
Yes.
Honor for the Parks and Recreation Administration Building, and merit for HRSD. All right, thank you all. In September, I will bring this forward with all of the award winners and their folks to your formal hearing on September 9th.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for the presentations we have, Madam Chair. We'll go ahead and move to the public hearing preview.
Okay.
Give us one sec as we get everything together.
Thank you. The first application is McLaren Investment LLC. This is an application for a subdivision variance to request through Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulation to subdivide the 39,998-square-foot partial into two lots for the construction of two single-family dwellings. The site is currently developed with a single-family residence that was significantly damaged by the fire. The minimum, the minimum lot area for the R20 Residential District is 20,000 square feet. The existing partial is shy of just two feet of the required 40,000-square-feet in order to be subdivided by right. The variance is necessary to create a proposed Lot B since it is two square feet short of meeting the required 20,000-square-feet due to the side property line not able, not completely perpendicular to the front and rear yard property line. Properties along this block of Flubber Avenue is comprised of ranch-style, single-family dwellings with lot size that varies between 40,000 to 20,000-square-feet. The proposed rendering depicts two stor-, a two-story contemporary-style dwellings with bricks and cement-fiber boarding exterior. While it is not in character with the ranch-style dwelling for this area, the proposed dwellings are typical for infill development and typical for the lots of this size. The proposed exterior building material are compatible with the surrounding area. In staff's opinion, the proposed subdivision meets the criteria of Section 9.3 of the subdivision regulations. The hardship exists due to the odd shape of the partial, causing the lot area to be shy of two square feet. The approval of the, this subdivision variance is not, will not cause adverse effect to the character of the neighborhood. Four ladders of support from the adjacent property has been received by staff. Staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to condition, the conditions listed in the report. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Rob.
If the property was the 20,000-square-feet, it would not be required to come to count to us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It would be, if they have 40,000-square-feet, they would be able to simplify by right, each lot being 20,000-square-feet.
And then they could build on it whatever they wanted?
Single-family, yes.
Single-family, okay. Thank you.
They're two square feet short. Anybody have, this is you?
Yep, I have no problem. I've not heard about, from anybody in the neighborhood. Anything, it's kind of, the house that's on there now is burnt down, it burned down a while ago, so if anything, I'll fix it up a little bit. Time to, problem, consent?
All right. Anybody else?
All right. The next item on the agenda is a request for the 402, the August 12th Planning Commission hearing, in order for the applicant to file an additional application for the CD to consider, so that both applications can be heard at the same time.
So, 30 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To provide just a little bit of background on this, state code change that allowed bingo halls to operate in a more expanded fashion, which included machines, which turned them into also a commercial rec center. So, we kind of dove into this one a little deep and, and came out that they needed additional approval, so...
Thank you. All right, number three?
All right. Our next item is located on Little Neck Road at Kings Grant Baptist Church. Next slide, please. The conditional use permit for an open-air market was approved in 2015. Next slide, please. The community market operates twice a month on Thursdays from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. between June and September. Next. The market has food trucks, vendors, information tables, children's activities, and music. Next slide. Due to the success of the market, the applicant is requesting a modification to expand the operating season and frequency of events. They would like to operate at the same time on Thursdays, but do it weekly during a longer season of between April and October of each year. Between November and March, they would like to operate once a month with the proposed hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The church provides the use of their property free of charge and does not receive any financial compensation. Parking is provided on the east and north sides of the church. The proposed modification is acceptable, as it has been operating successfully for several years without incident and is consistent with the policies of the Conference of Plan that calls for a mix of land uses that contribute to social interaction and the day-to-day life of residents. To make sure there is enough parking, staff has recommended condition number five, that the market shall only operate when church services are not being held. There is no known opposition to this request. Staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions listed, and the applicant has confirmed that they are agreeable to the recommended conditions. Are there any questions?
Do you have any questions, Jonathan? Yeah, Jack?
Did they, did they actually submit this back in February? Is that when they submitted?
Yes.
So it's been a while since-
It's been a while, but then midstream, they changed their application request, and so after working with, through those things, we now, they are now ready to move forward. So they know they've missed the change for the start of the season, but, you know, they're thinking long-term.
All right. It's just warm around here. Got to get a good season in.
Definitely.
I mean, I would, I would consent.
Yeah.
I actually grew up about six hours from this.
The thing is, a lot of these vendors are the same ones that are the old beach market.
Yeah.
Right.
They're on a boom in business now.
It's busy.
Yeah. They're a great asset in addition, so.
Absolutely.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Hi.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is an application for a conditional use permit for a 38-unit housing facility for seniors and disabled persons. The site is Zoned R5D, and it's in the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area. The facility will serve as Phase Two of Tranquility at the Lakes, which is an existing 40-unit housing facility for seniors and disabled persons, constructed in 2017 on the southeast corner of Burton Station Road and Tolliver Road. So the existing facility is directly across from the subject site, which is shown there. Proposed site layout and architectural design of the new building emulate the existing Tranquility at the Lakes facility. Both buildings are placed near the street corner with surface parking on the interior and rear of the lot. The three-story structures are designed as contemporary garden-style apartment buildings with balconies or porches on each level, ample windows, and brick and cement fiber board siding and trim. Project will be designed and constructed to meet EarthCraft Virginia's green building standards, EPA Energy Star standards, and Universal Design standards. The proposed use is consistent with the Conference of Plan's long-term vision to provide a variety of housing types within the Burton Station Village District of the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area, including facilities, living facilities for seniors and the disabled. The proposed site and building design support the Master Plan's recommendation for compact urban-style development by providing a medium-density, multi-story facility placed near the street. Based on the demand for affordable senior housing and the activity and life generated by the two developments, especially now that the extensive Burton Station and Tolliver Road, roadway and utility capital improvement projects are complete, staff recommends approval of this request. There are seven recommended conditions.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do any of those, excuse me?
Go ahead, Robin.
Do any of those conditions have to do with mitigating the tree loss of-
There is, I mean, it's not so much a one-for-one.
Yeah.
But they are being asked, or one of the conditions recommends, an evergreen buffer along the, let's see, evergreen landscape buffer on the western property line.
Okay.
There's also ample landscape plantings that they have included on their site plan, and they are conditioned to build it substantially in conformance with the site plan.
Great, okay. As a social worker, I think this is a great addition to the community. There is nowhere near enough of this type of development anywhere in the country, and I think this is a great plan.
Thank you. Jack?
Can you, can you explain a little bit about the mixed use? Because looking at the, you know, you pointed out in the application that, you know, Burton Station Village District, you know, right there, I think on these corners, it says mixed use, is what the, or, you know, within this, the SGA, specifically within the Burton Station Village District, you know, maybe describe a little bit about, you know, how mixed use would work in this area? Because it's, you know, these aren't mixed, these are specifically-
Right. So it's, there's a little variation when you use the term mixed use. In fact, we kind of scaled back on that with the latest update to the Burton Station SGA plan to refer to it more as a mixture of uses or multiple use. So the uses, like if you have residential and commercial, they don't necessarily need to be in the same building, but they could be next door to each other, as long as there is a compatible blend to create a more village-like atmosphere. So these are, this is a great start to have some residents living in the community and development taking place. But as future applications come along, a lot, we may see more rezonings to either a mixed-use category or a commercial category, however the, however the market comes forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I don't really care. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of fantasy in some of those SGA plans. It's not, don't make any sense. And this is, Robin's exactly right. This is a very necessary, I keep getting away from that microphone, I apologize. This is a very necessary use. It's appropriate. There's already a piece right next door to it. Burton Station Road and Tolliver Road are not going to be, enjoy an explosion of mixed-use development like Town Center or something in there. So I think what Ashby said is, is quite real and appropriate on this, and it certainly is well-needed. I'd stick it on consent and put it in our rearview mirror.
Thank you, Ashby.
Thank you.
All right. Well, um-
Nurse Cantino Laredo again.
Mr. Redmond, would you like to put this on consent? All right.
And I'd be happy to say something about it.
Good morning. The next item is the application of Bonnie G. Bright Sand Company for a modification of conditions for a borrow pit located on their property at 200 Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District. To ensure adequate public noticing, the applicant is requesting a deferral of this application to the August 12 public hearing. Are there any questions?
Thirty days.
No.
Thirty days.
We'll see them in August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the application of EquiKids EquiVets therapeutic writing program for a conditional rezoning for their property located at 2626 Heritage Park Drive in the Princess Anne District. The Planning Commission voted to indefinitely defer this application at the June 24 Planning Commission hearing. However, the deadline for advertising for the July 8 public hearing was prior to the June 24 public hearing, and so due to this timing issue, the application appears on today's agenda. No action or vote is necessary for this item, as it was indefinitely deferred at the June 24 Planning Commission hearing. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Do you have a question?
Yeah. So when we do the deferrals, just don't even bring it up?
I would bring it up, but it is definitely deferred.
The same.
You've already done it, and so just kind of, so at least people know.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is, good morning. This is a request for a subdivision variance and rezoning at 2968 Holland Road. The applicant plans to subdivide the approximately 24-acre parcel to create two lots. The lot is currently encumbered by a naval restrictive easement, which limits the uses permitted on-site. Proposed Lot A would be created from a 2.5-acre portion of the parcel, which is not encumbered by this restrictive easement. The applicant also proposes to rezone this proposed Lot A to I-1 Light Industrial District to allow for future non-residential development on the site. Under the current agricultural zoning, proposed Lot A would only be large enough for residential use and not a commercial or industrial use. The comprehensive plan, however, calls for this area of the city to be developed with light industrial, office, limited retail, while specifically calling for no additional residential development. The area is also within the designated accident, potential zone, which further discourages residential development. Therefore, staff is supportive of the request to rezone proposed Lot A, as it would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the overlying ACU's designation, and within the character of the surrounding area. The remainder of the parcel, proposed Lot B, will be substandard in both lot width and lot area due to the presence of wetlands and floodplains, subject to special restrictions, which creates the need for a subdivision variance. The proposed lot width is 38 feet, while the required lot width in the Ag-2 zoning district is 150 feet. The proposed lot area is 21 acres, but only 2.36 acres of this are outside of the floodplain, subject to special restriction. The required area for a non-residential use is three acres. The current outdoor recreational use for paintball was granted a conditional use permit in 2006. At that time, it was also reviewed by the Navy for conformance with the Navy restrictive easement that overlays a portion of the property, and determined to be an appropriate use. This use will continue to occupy proposed Lot B. The low intensity of the paintball operation does serve to protect the environmental features of the site while being consistent with the terms of the naval easement. Any future redevelopment or use on proposed Lot B would have to remain limited due to the terms of this easement. With regard to future development, the comprehensive plan states that access to Holland Road should be kept to a minimum. Staff is therefore recommending conditions two, three, and four, which can be viewed on page five of the staff report, to limit proposed lots A and B to one point of ingress and egress along Holland Road. In staff's view, it is essential to consolidate these access points when possible to protect the arterial functions of Holland Road. Allowing additional access points will lead to capacity and safety issues in the future, which could undermine the investment the city has made in improving Holland Road. The applicant is currently in dispute with some of these conditions. We've been working with them closely to try to resolve some of the issues, and we hope to come to agreement today on that. But within the context of the surrounding area, the request as a whole would be unlikely to have a detrimental effect upon adjacent property or the character of the area. One letter of support from nearby property owner has been submitted to staff. Application complies with the guidance of the comprehensive plan, provides protection to environmental features, and complies with the ACU's in terms of the Navy's restrictive easement. Staff therefore supports the rezoning and recommends approval of the subject, of the subdivision variance, subject to the conditions provided. And I will take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Weiner?
So are we, are you going to talk to them before the hearing to make sure that they're okay with the conditions, or how's that going to work?
We have provided them a copy of altered conditions that we're looking to address currently. The applicant is here, and it's kind of an ongoing process, last-minute situation.
Our plan, Mr. Weiner, is to have the, the condition prepared and ready before the hearing.
Okay.
I believe we've worked, we've worked through most of it this, while we've been doing the presentation, so.
I'm good with consent, as long as, as long as they meet the conditions, I will, we'll follow up with the-
Well, go ahead, Dave.
No, you, please.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I agree with consent. This is, I read this thing yesterday, and I couldn't figure out what in the world was going on. It was so confusing.
You had to read it a couple of times.
Yeah, you did.
You did have to read this one.
And, and it's not that complicated when you get right down to it, except I will say this, just so I can sleep better. I don't like the idea of coercing someone to rezone a portion of the property into I-1, just to clean up the rest of the site. They intend to do it that way. I understand, I don't have any particular objection, but when people have zoning by right, that's what they have, trying to knuckle them under, it seems to me, I don't, it just means you might have to rezone this thing twice. So if there's some use that's not I-1 that they might want to do there, turn it out, then he's going to have to rezone it again, as opposed to just leaving well enough alone. Lord knows, we've gotten ourselves in plenty of trouble around here, short-term rentals, by not leaving well enough alone. And, and this just strikes me as one of those things that I find unnecessary and not cool to do to people, so. There. Thank you. But I do agree with the consent.
Mr. Dunham?
And to Mr. Redmond's point, the reason why we went down that path, and again, in my direction, was to assure that we don't get a residential use on the property, because that is, that is not compliant with the naval restriction. If not, we would have had to recommend and not have the whole thing, so.
Right.
We were trying to get them to a point where we could be okay, so, and that's-
Not there yet.
Yeah.
Why don't we just?
Put on consent.
Put it on consent, and then unless we hear different, and everybody's agreeable, and Mr. Burdon gets his stuff worked through, then we'll revisit that, right before we start again. How's that sound?
Mr. Wall, have a question.
I've got, I've got one more question. So what if they build a house out there right now, Bobby? Just go out there and put up a house?
Yeah.
And then come back in a year, and they want to do this?
Well, it's one parcel now with a conditional use permit, so they already have a use on the property, so they couldn't, they're proposing the subdivision to cut the lot out, which is what the, which is what we're concerned.
I've got a question.
I've got rights for a reason. I've got a question.
Yes, Jack?
Don't we usually see the, see, I think I'm missing something here, but don't we usually see, like, if they're rezoning, what they're trying to?
What they're trying to, what they're trying to, what they're trying, their intent is in the future?
Additional rezoning?
Usually.
Usually.
This is not conditional.
It's not conditional.
It's not conditional.
They don't have an intended use.
They're just rezoning it at a residential.
To-
At agricultural.
To, out of agric, oh, they, I can't see.
It's agricultural.
Okay, sorry, it's ag.
We lose control of, of what will go there eventually.
We have, we have no control of what it will look like. No, nothing.
It seems like, I don't know.
Oh, all right.
Want to hear it?
Do you want to hear it?
That's okay.
Look at, oh, my God.
I guess I'm just confused as to why, I agree with Dave. I mean, why, why is it getting rezoned to I-1 out front?
Without anything on it.
Well, without an intended use.
Sorry. Why is he getting rezoned to I-1 out front when we don't have an intended use? The city loses the ability to have some influence over what will go there at some point. I just, to me, it seems like, I don't know, that's usually, it's just usually not the way we do it, but.
And, and staff's opinion, the protection to not allow residential use is, and to be compliant with the ACU's requirement is much, at this point where we're at with this proposal, is, is more important than the design of what could potentially go there. We want, we are concerned with that residential use going there. The lot doesn't exist now to build a house on it. So, I mean, it's, they are requesting to cut the lots up, and they will have a lot that you cannot use except for residential use. It does not meet the minimum lot size standards for anything other than residential, and we just, we couldn't support it if they didn't do this.
So when it's zoned I-1, just so I'm clear, somebody will be able to come in and build a metal building for, you know, a warehouse use.
a metal building for, you know, a warehouse use, and we will not have the opportunity to dictate what kind of facade the building will have, you know, how the parking, the landscaping layout will be. It's going to be allowed by right, industrial use. In an area that, I mean, there is, there are some neighborhoods near there, across the street, I just, I just throw that out. I mean, it just seems like we're leaving something on the table here.
Yes.
So, Mr. DeHaan, question for you. If, so, say this gets denied completely, and it goes, stays AG2, and you're talking about a house, wouldn't it still have to come back to be rezoned residential?
No, the minimum, so...
Because it meets minimum requirement, minimum space?
So they have a use permit now for the paintball park. What they're proposing is to create a lot that doesn't, they're proposing to create a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot size standards for anything other than a residential use.
Okay.
So, could they, if they got rid of the paintball park, could they build the house on this? Yes, but they would get rid of the paintball park to do it, because they need the size, right? Because it's one lot now. So, I mean, it's, that's a value judgment on the applicant. The applicant is finding value to request the subdivision in order to maintain, to potentially continue the paintball use, outdoor rec use, and then hold on to the frontage as well. So we, as staff, we wanted to get them there if we could, which is, which is why we said we couldn't support it, if the only thing you could do is residential on that parcel, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Dave.
Well, you can grow stuff on it. It's two and a half acres, and it's going to be zoned AG1.
That is correct.
You grow an awful lot on two and a half acres. I got like 300 feet, and it pumps out a lot of produce, so I did not mean to make a federal case out of this.
No.
So I just think it was, it's just kind of overly coercive and unnecessarily, so was my point. I don't want this thing to get knocked off. He's not, I don't think the applicant's anywhere near as worked up about it as I am, and they are, ultimately what they're trying to do is sell the piece property to the paintball people, and this is necessary to clean it all up. We just had to go and get all strong arm on it, which I don't care for, so I do think it's appropriate for consent if those, if those...
But we do lose the ability to influence what the future development will be on an I-1 piece in an area that has a lot of residential. I just, to me, I don't know, I don't, I don't agree with it.
And will this set the precedence? I mean, is this something that's going to, you know, for the entire South Ocean, especially economic growth area?
What we're doing?
For anybody to just say, well, I'm just going to zone the whole thing, I-1, all my agricultural land, and that's where you all are.
I agree. Yeah.
All down the road, though, you have the SPCA there, you have the city trash place there, you've got, you've got more, there's more, there's more commercial than residential in that area right there.
Yeah, but we've had a problem with this strip before, with that, with the residential and the I-1, and a conflict between the two of them. We have, we have visited this before.
Don't we want the ability to influence what buildings look like?
Yeah, it's kind of what we do, partly.
But we're losing that. We're not going to have it, and so, I mean, we look at, look at the senior facility, we start looking at the architectural renderings, everything else to rezone it, and now we're going to rezone something we don't even know what it's going to look like. I don't think it should be on consent.
Mike, what do you think?
I'd like to know what the issues, there's only four conditions. What are the conditions causing a problem?
The conditions are, mostly, there are, three of them are regarding access, the ones that are in contention. It was a concern that if the non-access easement was placed on the plat, that they would be unable to move an access point in the future to where there is a current median cutout, which might be a preferential access point for the two lots. And I believe there was also a potential desire to share access with VDOT, to be speaking on the applicant's behalf for that, but we're trying to look at those conditions, and we're in the same sort of ballpark with where we want to get to, but the language right now is a little bit finicky.
Sure.
No, go ahead.
Okay. The issue, and I don't know if we, if we could bring up the aerial or the map of it. The issue is that right now Fox Paintball Park has an access point. It's not located at the median opening, you know, it's south of the median opening, and Lot A is set up so that in the future, when it's developed, it can have access to the median opening. So our concern, traffic engineer's concern, is that if you subdivide the property, you double the amount of entrances. It's not good access management to increase the number of access points on a road like this. I mean, like we wrote in the report, you know, this is a major arterial roadway, it's got great capacity now. It's, it's a great safe road because there's not a whole lot of entrances on this road, and it's, you know, four-lane divided. This is, it's a, it's a great road, access-wise and safety-wise. If you start doubling or tripling the number of access points on a road, when people subdivide properties like this, now you're going to end up with a road like Virginia Beach Boulevard or Alaskan Road, and again, it won't start, you know, it won't become bad with this one access point, but if it continues to happen. So good access management is to make sure that when parcels subdivide, they share the one entrance. And the conditions basically say that if and when Lot A is developed, Lot B is going to lose its entrance, and it's going to have to have a cross-access easement across to the new entrance, which undeniably is going to be at the median opening, because median openings are very, very, very valuable for development. So that's, that's basically all it is, and I think the client, or the property owner at first didn't want to do this because they didn't want to give up their entrance to the paintball, but now they're, they're willing to do it, and I do have a, you know, something that Eddie just gave me that I think is good, and Aubrey, I don't think, has seen it yet. But the one thing that I do want to mention is that, you know, they are going to be working, try to work with VDOT. VDOT has an entrance there. It serves as, it serves as a, and I don't even know if it's VDOT, it may be the city's at this point, because we maintain the drainage system, but there's a little access point, it's 12-foot wide, it's used to maintain the drain adjustment that runs down the property line there. A truck comes in once a month, maybe once every two months, to, you know, to muck it out and maintain it. But if there's a proposal to go to VDOT or go to the city to say, hey, how about if you move your entrance over to our entrance, and in that way, you know, the city wins because they've maintained two entrances instead of three, and the paintball gets to keep their entrance, we wouldn't approve that. I mean, I think, and I think Eddie, you know, or the attorney is going to maybe bring that up, but I, that will be going around these conditions and probably would require a modification anyway, that we wouldn't support, traffic engineer wouldn't support. So anyway, as they're written right here, I'm okay with it.
We don't know what you're looking at.
And you guys will see this, but, but basically, it says exactly what I, what I said. As Lot A is developed, Lot B's entrance will go away, and a cross-access easement will have to be put in place across Lot B to Lot A to the new entrance that's going to be approved with the Lot A site plan. Whatever Lot A looks like, it could be a metal building, I mean, like you guys are saying.
We don't know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. As long as the applicant's good with it, I'm fine with it. I mean, Whitney, I hear what you're saying, but there's just so much building out there right now, some industrial parks that we just don't have control over anyway. I mean, nobody has control over them, so, I mean, I have no problem with it personally, for consent.
I'm okay with it.
Y'all, what do you think?
So is the applicant trying to sell the back parcel? Is that, that's what this is all about? And we want to control what's going to be on the front porch? Now, come on, can you...
But if it gets rezoned to I-1 without any kind of proper architectural renderings or standards, then we have no control. Typically, the applicant has to know, typically the applicant has to submit renderings, and debate whether we think it's a fair deal, but in this case, it's just, it's not good. Anyway, I just make that point because certainly hold a lot of people to a lot of standards, and now we're not.
Do you want to...
I mean, I don't think hearing, it's not going to change anything.
Well, you, I mean...
I just wanted to go on record that...
Because I know that you and Jack feel strongly about that, and I, and I don't disagree, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
You know, it's, zoning is a tool of the comprehensive plan. You know, we're changing the zoning, and that's, that's okay, and I see what you're saying about the, about the building, about the aesthetics, and the buffer, and the screening, and all of that, even though that would be within the zoning ordinance. I don't want to set a precedence on, you know, I want to be fair in how we approach all of our applications in this part of the, in the city. Because I know that we're going to have some, and we have had some, so, I don't know.
Mr. DeHaan. Do you want, I mean...
So, I mean, it sounds like that you at least want to address this with, and again, I hate to take it off the consent agenda, there's consensus, but it seems like there's commissioners that would like to discuss it with the applicant.
Discuss it a little more, so, why don't we just, why don't we just, why don't we just hear it? And we'll just do it that way.
I don't know that we need to do that. We probably just need to have a sidebar with the applicant or his attorney real fast.
All right.
I mean, we're all kind of talking for other people, and that's kind of not...
Let's just hear it.
Thank you.
I agree. I'm with Whitney on that.
I'm, yeah. All right. Moving along.
Okay, we had a request at 5052 Lord Felton Lane for a subdivision variance. The applicant is requesting a withdrawal of the application, and wished to reconsider their application and potentially come back in the future, but nothing has been determined at this time, so they're withdrawing at this moment.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This application is requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at this condominium, 323 Norfolk Avenue, Zoned OR, Oceanfront District. This condominium is located in Lake Station condominiums and has two bedrooms. Thus, two parking spaces are required. Each condo unit has one assigned parking space on-site. Space number 23 is specific for this unit. To accommodate the other required parking space, the applicant has submitted a letter of intent to lease a parking space from the Ninth Street Parking Garage. Since the property is within the boundary of the Residential Parking Permit Program, RPPP, parking passes issued for the subject dwelling unit has, will be limited to two resident passes. Guests and temporary passes will not be permitted while the conditional use permit is active. The zoning administrator has reviewed this alternative parking plan and deemed it acceptable. Staff received a letter June 24, 2020, of a complaint about noise and parking issues from an incident that occurred February 22 of 2020. Staff has also received 15 letters of opposition from Lake State condominium owners, noting concerns about privacy, parking, and noise. Staff has also received 10 letters of support from condominium owners. And although staff has received letters of opposition, the applicant can reasonably meet all requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance for short-term rental use. As I am aware, opposition will be speaking at the hearing. Are there any questions?
I have a question, and I don't know if you have an answer for this. So all the letters that we received, there were 15 opposed?
Yes, 15.
So the 15 that are opposed, are they residents?
Correct.
Current, year-round residents?
Their owners are their year-round residents.
And the 10 that were for, are they short-term rental?
At this time, we have only received one registration from this property, so staff, we only have one registration, so...
So there's only, at this time, in the...
One conditional use permit, and then one registration has been received on this property.
We don't believe that the, those in support are short-term renters. They, they're operating a short-term rental, in other words.
You don't?
We don't believe they are, but we don't, we have not asked that specific question.
I was just curious as to, because it just seems there's a lot of discussion about this building, and I was trying to kind of get my head wrapped around if people were operating short-term rentals in here or anticipating doing it as well, and so, I don't, anyway, I sat down and read all the, I just sat and read all the letters, and, and it was interesting. Anyway, so we're all on that, yes, Robert?
Do we have any information about the incident in February?
Yes. One of the letters that was sent as a supplement was about a complaint about someone who had stayed on the property at 323 Norfolk Avenue, and the guests were intoxicated and were just very disruptive of the condominium itself and the outside common areas.
Some, I might have missed something I was reading. The calls or the letters of opposition complaints, was that for this particular short-term rental? Have they been operating already?
So the owner bought the property in January and submitted the conditional use permit in April, and so complaints prior to January were the previous owner, complaints after January would be the current one, so that is a violation, they were operating without a conditional use permit in February. But she has since applied for the permit and has not been operating since then. Her daughter has been residing on the property because of the pandemic.
I'm going to pick on you, because you're the first short-term rental. Apparently, I'm the only one in here that doesn't have a life, and I watched a council meeting last night, and I had to do something, I was on treadmill. I didn't, or condition number seven, and I, we did this in factways when, and where it's this physical response to the side of short-term rentals not required. And there was one last night that the person lived in Stanton, or Stalin, whatever you say. And, and, you know, I had to dig back into all my stuff because I saved it, and looking at, we actually did that, physical response, short-term rental is not required. I don't know why we did. I always thought that it was supposed to be a physical, yeah, I thought it was too, a physical response, but I guess, no, there isn't. I went back to all the stuff we did, and we didn't. I'm just bringing that up now because that's one of my concerns to talk about this afternoon, just so everybody keep that in mind. Okay.
Yeah, I was watching too. I do know that she lives locally. Me too. But I do know that she does live locally, and she actually can respond within 30 minutes because she has been visiting the property pretty regularly.
Okay. Can I, Ms. Wilson, can I ask real quick, before we, I know we're going to do this this afternoon, but is, can we make that a condition, that you have to have somebody local?
You can make that a condition.
Not what?
I'm sorry?
You can make that a condition, yes, if you want to, I think what we did last night is that you have to strike that you don't have to physically respond.
Okay, yeah, all right, right, okay. So that's something we can look at? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Whitney, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Yes, Jack?
It always seems like that this, you know, while this is, you know, this is a, you know, part of the process, but that the condominium complex, you know, people feel that strongly that they should have, and, you know, maybe that's not for us to decide, but, you know, controls or... decide, but, you know, controls or, you know, something in place that, that limits their ability to, if that many, this many people are opposed to a short-term rental, to have something that would be part of their association, that, I don't know if there's, that wouldn't be for this.
We can't do that.
Yeah, that's not for this, you know, commission, but.
Thank you for saying.
Yeah, Mike?
They can do that. They can have a, a vote of the owners, and if the sufficient majority under their documents vote to not allow short-term rentals, then they will not have short-term rentals. So, they, if the, if the group can, that's objecting, can gather enough votes, then they can take care of that.
Less than 30-day rentals, or something different than that.
Mike, can I ask you a question? So, apparently, the, their condo association doesn't have that in their bylaws, correct?
I don't know.
Well.
I don't think, we know, I don't think anybody investigates.
I don't think they would come in front of us.
We're going to give this anyway, aren't we?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm just, you know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
One question.
But you said, well, we can't do that, well, why not? I mean.
Well, I don't have an answer.
My point is, my point is, everybody's, well, no, hold on, everybody.
No, I was going to ask.
Legally.
Pointed at me for. You're pointing at Ken. The, it seems to me a perfectly legitimate position to say that there's enough concentration in this one place, and enough opposition as a result, and enough prior activity that's caused disruption, that we don't think a conditional use permit is appropriate.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't want to, this notion that somehow we're.
And I didn't mean that, I just meant, yeah.
I mean, that strikes me as a perfectly legitimate kind of way to approach these things, if that's what we feel.
Oh, that's, yeah. No, we're not, just.
And that may be how I feel on this one.
I just, yeah, I just meant we can't control it for the condo association.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that.
But I'm going to dig a little deeper here, because I know we're going to do this this afternoon, but if we do go into an overlay, put this area into an overlay, then we can control quantity, the amount, correct?
You can put anything in an overlay that you think is necessary.
Okay, right. Perfect.
But how many?
I'm digging deep. I'm sorry?
But how many is too many?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We're going to hear this, so, um.
Okay.
We'll see you later.
Well, I've got a couple more after this, so.
You're our short-term rental girl.
Okay. Oh, no worries, thank you. The next application is Kim Wilkins, 1125 Pond Cypress Drive. This 9,116 square foot parcel is Zoned PDH 2 Plan Development District, R 5D. There are four bedrooms in this single-family dwelling, thus far, four parking spaces are required. The parking requirement can be met with two parking spaces in the garage. The zoning administrator has reviewed this alternative parking plan and deemed it acceptable. All other requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met, and staff has received three letters of support.
Unless somebody gripes. If there's any reason not to support it, I would put it on consent.
Yeah.
The next applicant is David Lucas, 505 Barberton Drive. This 4,223 square foot parcel is Zoned A 18 Apartments in a neighborhood containing a mix of single-family duplex and apartment dwellings. Assessor's records indicate this duplex has two bedrooms. The driveway in front of the dwelling serves both units of the duplex, 505 and 507. The driveway is 18 feet wide, wide, nine feet to be used by the subject unit, and 40 feet long, providing space to accommodate the two, required two parking spaces in a stacked orientation. One space is located on the property, the second space is part of the right-of-way, of the driveway, but is in the right-of-way. Parking in the right-of-way has traditionally been done at this location and does not block pedestrian or vehicular access. The zoning administrator has reviewed the alternative parking plan and deemed it acceptable. All other requirements of 241.2 of the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. Staff has received one letter of opposition.
Are we going to hear this one?
I believe there is a speaker signed up to speak in opposition, so.
Okay, because it's not on the list, that's why I was asking. Go back to the parking, go through that one more time again, I'm sorry. What, what was in the right-of-way, what wasn't, how did that work?
So, the driveway is 18 feet wide and 40 feet long, and serves both units, 505 and 507. 505 is the short-term rental application in front of you, and nine feet by 18 feet is located on the property of that driveway, and the remaining is in the right-of-way.
Okay.
So, that second parking space is completely in the right-of-way, but the driveway is 40 feet long.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to, can I say something?
Yeah.
Because this is another thing that I'm going to bring up this afternoon. I, um, and I think, um, council's actually talked about this also. There's a nine-by-18-foot parking space in the right-of-way that's been used all the time, it gets used all the time. And there might be, maybe we should think about a condition that since it's in the right-of-way, if at all in the future that somebody wants to, Virginia Power, Natural Gas, City of Virginia Beach wants to expand the road, then they lose their conditional use permit for the short-term rental. They, they have no choice, then they lose it because they're going to take the parking spot from them. But as long as there's a nine-by-18, but it has to be a nine-by-18, it can't encroach in the road or a sidewalk, but a nine-by-18-foot space, I think we should allow in the future. Anyway, that's what I'm going to bring up this afternoon.
Hold on, I lost you right at the end. Say that again.
Yeah, that's a.
So, there's a nine-by-18 space in the right-of-way. I mean, it's a parking space, it doesn't encroach the street, it doesn't encroach the sidewalk, but it's there, and it's in the right-of-way. In the future, so the cit, whoever owns that right-of-way, either it'd be the city, Virginia Natural Gas, Power, whatever, if they need to take that right-of-way and do something with it, they'll lose their conditional use permit.
They, they won't be able to meet the conditions.
Right, exactly, they won't be able to use the conditional use permit, but as long as there's a nine-by-18 spot, why can't they use it? It's been there for years, they've been using it for years, I don't see why it can't be used. My opinion. And it's everywhere in the north end, and it's a lot of places.
Well, it is, I think it depends on if there's a sidewalk, and, oh, sorry.
That's, I, that's, that's one of these things, as we move forward with this yet more short-term rental torture, that I think, I frankly think the city council's got to just make a decision.
You're letting us.
About what the.
Right-of-way.
About the right-of-way issue. How many times have we had this conversation?
I know.
How many times are we going to have it still?
It has about 18 different variations of.
It has 18 different variations, and smart guys like Inman can't even figure it out. Then we got to have, I mean, you know, they got to just set a policy, put it in the ordinance, and then we, and then, and you don't have this thing again and again and again.
I agree, I agree, but I mean, this is one of them, and this thing.
But I, I think that's, and there's three or four little issues like that, that we always seem to go around the, you know, the merry-go-round on.
Well, I think too, sometimes it's the, what surrounds that? Is there a sidewalk? Is there a right-of-way? Is it?
My view of all of that is that the zoning administrator is well-capable of being able to figure that out without us having to have a five-minute conversation about it on every application where this comes up, and it would take him probably about 10 seconds for each one that he looks at. He can say, yes, that's an issue, you're not going to be able to meet the parking requirement in this instance, no, that's not, and not have to do all this.
I agree, I agree 100%.
But in fairness, anyway, we'll discuss all that this afternoon, we don't need to do it right now, yes, Mr. Inman?
I just have one more. I would consistently vote, like I did last time, that if there's a sidewalk there, if there's a sidewalk there, and that would cross that driveway and cross that number-two parking space, I'd vote against it, because it's going to get, you know, block, block the sidewalk, can't, people, it's already a narrow street, you know, that's.
But the good part about putting that in an ordinance, then it wouldn't even meet the requirement, so it wouldn't even be here. You know what I mean? If that was in your, because I'm with you 100%, blocks the sidewalk, and it doesn't have nine-by-18 because the sidewalk's there, it doesn't go through, bottom line. I am, I got all kinds of stuff, you wait.
Mr. Wall.
It was 8:30.
Jack?
Yeah, something looks funny with this layout on the, just the parking and the way that the, um, this is drawn, so if you could revisit that, just look at the map, just the area, you're just looking at the way that the, um, your schematic, the schematic is drawn. I don't think it's 20 feet into the right-of-way, just the way that it's, so you may want to revisit that schematic.
All right.
Okay, real quick, I was supposed to say, can you go back to that picture, the picture right there? There's a right-of-way there, I mean, really, it's a driveway. I don't understand why that can't be used, anyways, my opinion.
Well, I think it's, it's, you know, that's why we get to look at each one of them and decide, and that's a good thing. So, all right.
So, we are going to hear.
Where, where are we? Y'all.
We're going to hear this one, right? 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so my last one for today will be.
Yeah, no, there you go.
Summer's not leaving that road again.
It's okay, I'm prepared for this. My last one for today will be Curtis Jordan, 629 Surfside Drive. This parcel is approximately 10,000 square feet and Zoned R 10 Residential. This single-family dwelling is located in the Croatan neighborhood. Assessor's records indicate this dwelling has four bedrooms. All required parking spaces are accommodated on-site, three parking spaces in the driveway, and one in the two-car garage. No street parking is allowed on Surfside Avenue, however, all parking required is provided on-site. The zoning administrator has reviewed this parking plan and deemed it acceptable. All other requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met on this application, and staff has received one letter of opposition.
Okay. All right. Do you think they're coming?
Um, not that I am aware of, they've just submitted a letter.
George Ford on here today. All right, we'll just put it on consent for now, unless anybody has an issue with this one? Anybody look?
The, the letter is that they didn't receive appropriate notice.
Oh, is that what, okay.
I'm sorry, what about the opposition?
The opposition letter, is that they, right, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they didn't receive, and I believe it also talks about how they don't believe it's like compatible with the neighborhood, or something to that effect.
It says, no one emailed me about the above. I'm wondering why not? Have others been notified at last due process and advanced notification? I hereby oppose the conditional use permit.
Actually, they live on, I believe it's Croatan Hills, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't know where they live on Croatan Hills Drive, they may not have been required to be notified.
Yeah, that's the star.
It's, oh, yeah, they wouldn't have been required to be notified.
Okay. Yeah, no one from Croatan next door or the Croatan Civic League.
They're adjacent.
That's ours, that we're doing.
Oh, they're on a different street.
Yes.
Even though they're.
They are, I was counting that, that lot's huge, see how huge that lot is? And it does touch the other lot, so they would have received a letter, however. The city code says that if you have actual notice, which they do, that you can't complain about not getting noticed.
Obviously, there is.
Because they know about it.
Wrote a letter, she didn't know that.
I said we put on consent unless they show up.
Okay.
On consent.
Yeah, keep in mind too, there's been a big orange sign sitting in front of there for 30 days, so.
Moving along. We're going virtual now.
Will, we're ready for your item.
Uh, this is case number 14, and it's at 2305 Oak Street. It is in the Lynn Haven District. It's a short-term rental request. The property is approximately 6,900 square feet, located within the R 7.5 Residential District, which is in the Shore Drive overlay. The site currently is developed with one single-family dwelling, and according to city records, this dwelling was built in 1960. I found no records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use associated with this address. On-street parking is not permitted on the east and west sides of 20, of the 2,300 block of Oak Street, and there are no parking signs posted. The number of bedrooms in this short-term rental is three, the number of parking spaces provided on-site is three. The site is located within the Cape Story by the C subdivision, which is primarily home to single-family dwellings, however, there are numerous non-conforming duplex units scattered within the R 7.5 Single Family Zoning District portions of the neighborhood. The applicant's parking plan depicts three required off-street parking spaces within the existing driveway, none of which are in the right-of-way. This meets the requirements of Section 241.21 of the city zoning ordinance. Furthermore, all other requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. There was one letter of opposition received from the abutting property owner. I believe it was 2303 Oak Street. The letter expressed strong feelings relating to the number of short-term rentals in the neighborhood and the difficulty in controlling the number of occupants in each unit. There is currently another short-term rental that has gone through, that you guys saw across the street at 2306 Oak Street, and there is a vicinity map for the S T R registrations that is in the slide here. This concludes my presentation for this request. Oh, no, I'm sorry, let me back up one second. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation for this request, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Have any questions? Mr. Lynn Haven?
Got four on that street. Four on that street.
They have four on that street. People, you do anything you want.
But, sorry. I'm not very good with the microphone. We're not able to limit the number of short-term rentals, I don't know how we could oppose it, and. I asked the commission, is there?
Honestly, I'm, stay confused, I, I thought we could.
We can, you can do, you can do whatever you want.
We can, we can say this, this, it's too many.
Too many.
In that particular location, area.
Okay.
But that's, you know. I mean, it's. Where? I can't see the map. Yes, Robin?
We have not done that up to this point yet, at least as long as I've been here. Is that correct?
We have, we have denied on, we've denied one on Bayside.
Because of density?
Density, or, what was it? Dave, it was, um, you know, complaints or, you know, various reasons. Bayside's had a couple of them, but, you know, there, there is a, there, that is one of the reasons why we're looking at it today, is the density and what it is doing to the integrity of the neighborhoods at this point.
And that's my biggest concern, is what is it doing to the integrity of the neighborhoods?
And that is.
There is no question, it is going to change the neighborhoods of the city.
And that's been the, that's what we're going, that's why council's having a hard time, and that's why a lot of the civic leagues are having a large voice with these, because it's becoming, you know, three and four to a block, especially down close to, down close towards the oceanfront, and granted, you know, that is a resort area, but it is also a residential area, and they're impacting it greatly.
Absolutely.
And not in a positive way.
I agree.
So, that's why we said, you know.
Well, I think I'd like to hear it, and I think I'd probably, upon hearing it, be not favorable, looking at the proliferation that's going on in about four-block area there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, let's hear it. I mean, it, it's, it changes a neighborhood, and.
And this is.
It's a great neighborhood.
And we've had several discussions on, on that, and you've got kids and.
Oh, they have big Fourth of July parade, I mean, a big Halloween event. Oh, they have a big Fourth of July parade. I mean, a big Halloween event back in that neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we don't live far from there and know people that live in there. Quite frankly, I'm shocked that the neighborhood has not opposed these, the neighborhood hasn't gotten together, but-
Some of it is lack of understanding, and it, and we need to save all this.
Yeah, all right.
Later.
Let's hear it.
Okay, yeah.
Question from staff. Are y'all gonna let the applicant know so he wants a chance to be able to talk? Since we're gonna hear this. Just be fair to him.
Yes, Dave, sorry.
Just wanna let you know, I got a text from Commissioner Horsley. Says he'll be here in about an hour.
Oh, he'll be here.
He says "we," so I'm thinking Barnes is with him, whatever they're doing. Egg stuff, I don't know.
Farmers, they're farmers.
Pig and eggs.
Yeah, they have real jobs.
All right. Will, oh, we're with Will.
Will, we're ready for your next item.
Good morning again. I'm Will Miller. Work in the zoning office for the planning department, and this is agenda items number 15 and 16. This is an address of 510 Eighteenth Street, Units A and B. It's in the Beach District. Request for short-term rental for both Units A and B. This property is approximately 6,510 square feet and is located within the OR Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code District, also in the Vibe Creative District overlay. The lot contains two buildings. One building is a duplex-style house, duplex-style detached house facing Eighteenth Street, and the other building is a two-story mixed-use building with commercial uses on the ground floor and an apartment unit on the upper floor, and that faces Seventeenth and a Half Street, so that's in the back. Both buildings on this lot are owned by the applicant that's requesting this conditional use permit. Parking for the mixed-use building that faces Seventeenth and a Half Street, so the building in the back, their parking is located on the rear of the adjacent lot, which is 508 Eighteenth Street, and you'll be hearing that request for short-term rental next. And parking for the duplex-style detached house, where the short-term rentals will be located, in the building facing Eighteenth Street, is located between the front of the house and Eighteenth Street. According to city records, the duplex-style detached house that's facing Eighteenth Street, that's the subject of this request, was constructed in 1946, and the mixed-use building that's in the back at Seventeenth and a Half Street was completed in 2020. There are no previous zoning violations found relating to short-term rentals associated with this address. The property does lie within the RPPP boundary, where parking during the evening and overnight hours is limited. Based on this, a condition is recommended that would prohibit the occupants of the short-term rental from parking in the street during the restricted hours. The number of bedrooms in each unit, Unit A contains one bedroom, Unit B contains one bedroom. The number of on-site parking spaces provided, Unit A provides one parking space, Unit B provides one parking space, between the unit and Eighteenth Street. The site is located within the Vibe Creative District, which is home to a myriad of commercial and residential uses, with an emphasis on arts and culture. The surrounding area is a mixture of multifamily dwellings, duplex dwellings, single-family dwellings, and commercial uses. The subject property contains a duplex-style detached house facing Eighteenth Street, which is proposed for the short-term rental use. The applicant's parking plan depicts two required off-street parking spaces within the existing driveway, which meets the requirements of 241.21 of the city zoning ordinance. Based on these conditions, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation for items 15 and 16. I'll stand by for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Will?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Hey, Will, got a question for you. I'm, I don't know, maybe it's just me, I'm kinda confused. So, Eighteenth Street, 510 Eighteenth Street, you have two, Unit A, Unit B, one bedroom per unit. Seventeenth and a Half Street. What's going on Seventeenth? You have three units Seventeenth Street, or just two?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, there is two buildings on the property. There's the short-term rental that's got the two bedrooms, and that faces Eighteenth Street. But then, at one time, that building in the back was a garage. So, what they did is they, they being the owners, got permission to expand that building through the SGA office, zoning, and the permitting department, and they created a mixed-use building. On the first floor of that building are two commercial uses. One is a, what was called a craft business. It's kinda like a restaurant, craft noodle business, I believe is what they're doing, and then the other, I think, is like a personal fitness, folks. And then on the second floor is an apartment, and the applicant has already told us that he has no intention of asking for a short-term rental conditional use permit for that space. But yeah, that's a new building in the back, commercial on the first floor, apartment on the second.
So, I can understand exactly where this is. On Seventeenth Street, that new building to the west of it, to the left of it, is that Prosperity Pizza?
I wish I could tell you. I do not know. I'm sorry.
Maybe, 'cause my kids go there. 'Cause when Will said it was the noodle-
Yeah, I think to the left of it, I mean, that building that's in the back, that's on Seventeenth Street, if it's to what I'm thinking of, is a good-looking building that's on Seventeenth and a Half. I think that is. I think. I don't know, it's hard to tell. Just trying to ge, get my geography straight here, but, okay, sorry.
No, I'm totally confused.
Actually, I can understand now.
So, the commercial, the commercial building is to stay commercial, and just the one building-
Yeah.
With the two apartments. The front building is to be the short-term rental, both of those units.
One's item 15, one's item 16.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I'm good now.
Just the duplex?
Yep.
Okay.
So, these, the duplex units are directly across from Seaside Harbor, across Eighteenth Street. What's adjacent to it, to the west, looks like a contractor yard, storage lot, contractor storage lot? On the Eighteenth Street side.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, um, is this?
Pretty much cut and dry here.
Wait.
Or is it, can't say anything, short-term rentals, cut and dry anymore?
Did we do Eighteenth?
No, 15, 16.
This is 15 and 16?
They're on 15 and 16 right now.
They are?
Consent is good for me.
No, this is Seventeenth.
That's not appropriate for a short-term rental. I don't know what is.
Perfect. About mixed use. They got it all.
Okay.
It's by commercial, yeah, it's commercial use. All right, consent. Everybody get consent?
Yes.
All right.
Will, we're ready for your next item.
Which one do we hear?
We're gonna hear 14.
As cases 15 and 16. The address is the abutting property from case 15 and 16, so that one was 510. This one is 508 Eighteenth Street. Facing Eighteenth Street, this is Unit A and B. It's in the Beach District. This property is approximately 6,510 square feet, is located within the OR Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code District, Vibe Creative District overlay. There is one duplex-style detached house sitting on this parcel. In addition, the property contains a gravel parking lot directly behind this duplex, and that's used for the adjacent mixed-use building that we just talked about at 510. So, the, the building at 510, facing Seventeenth and a Half Street, uses the parking lot behind 508 Eighteenth Street, and that parking lot is along Seventeenth and a Half. According to city records, the structure was built in 1947. A complaint relating to this address was received by the zoning administration on 7/14 of 2017, and was relating to short-term rental. The complaint stated that, quote, "The owner is running an Airbnb from this residence," end quote. The zoning inspector assigned to the case noted the following outcome in her investigation on November the 6th, 2017, quote, "We'll continue to monitor this address, waiting for new ordinance to come out," end quote. No other details relating to this complaint were found, and no other complaints were found relating to this address. The property lies within the RPPP boundary, where parking during the evening and overnight hours is limited. Based on this, a condition is recommended that would prohibit the occupants of the short-term rental from parking in the street during the restricted hours. The number of bedrooms in the short-term rentals, Unit A contains two bedrooms, Unit B contains one bedroom. The number of parking spaces on-site, Unit A, two, and Unit B, one. All three parking spaces are between the building, the duplex building, and Eighteenth Street, and none of the three go into the city right-of-way. The site is located within the Vibe Creative District, home to a myriad of commercial and residential uses, with an emphasis on art and culture. Surrounding area is a mixture of multifamily dwellings, duplex dwellings, single-family, and commercial uses. The applicant's parking plan does depict those three off-street parking spaces within the existing driveway, and it meets the requirements of Section 241.21 of the city zoning ordinance. I received no complaints, and I forgot to tell you, I've received no letters of support or opposition for 15, 16, or 17, and 18. Based on these considerations stated, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation for items 17 and 18. I will stand by with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Will? All right, can we put this on consent?
Will, we're ready for your last item.
All right, this is my last item, item number 19. The address of this short-term rental conditional use permit request is at 905 12th Street. This is in the Beach District. This 7,000-square-foot lot is located within the R5D residential district and contains one duplex building, which comprises two units. However, only one unit is part of this application, and this applicant does not own the other unit. According to city records, this duplex was constructed in 2011. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with this subject address. On-street parking is permitted 24 hours per day. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking spaces required could occur within the public street. The number of bedrooms in the short-term rental is three. The number of parking spaces provided on-site is three, two in the driveway and one in the garage. The Lakewood subdivision, which is a neighborhood comprised of a multitude of housing types with a few scattered commercial uses. Lakewood is bordered by Norfolk Avenue to the south, 16th Street to the north, Colony Mobile Home Park to the west, and Lake Holly to the east. The subject property is situated along a dead-end portion of 12th Street and is surrounded by other duplex dwellings. The applicant's parking plan depicts three required off-street parking spaces on the property, again, one within the garage and two within the driveway. As permitted by Section 241.21 of the zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the alternative parking plan and deemed it acceptable. However, a condition is recommended that assures the garage will always be available to short-term rental occupants. Furthermore, the requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can reasonably be met by the applicant. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. No letters of opposition or support were received for this application that I'm aware of, and this concludes my presentation for this request and my presentation for the day. Thank you, and I'll stand by for any questions, and I hope everybody's doing well.
Right. Does anybody have any questions? For Will? No? Thank you, Will. Will go ahead and consent?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know. You look at the proliferation going on down there.
Hold on, Will, don't go anywhere.
You look at that chart. Look if you got it on your screen.
This is all new build, yeah.
We got, um, it's close, you know, it's close to being like the other one. You got four within a, you know, a few hundred yards of this one. It's a neighborhood. Looks like a pretty nice neighborhood.
It's all new build, yeah.
I don't know. You know, you got, you got two there. It looks like it's one, but it's two on 12th Street. Across Rudy Avenue, there's two, and there's another one in the same block, and there's another one in the adjacent block. I don't know.
Get the ones on, right there off of, is that Maryland? One, two, three. Those are those townhouses. Do you want, would you like to hear it? Want to talk about it?
I don't know, was everybody else on there?
I disagree on that one. I'm sorry. I disagree on this one. There's a lot of houses I'm staring at. I see dots, but I see a lot more houses than I see dots. It's a very, very dense part of the world. There's a natural barrier that Norfolk Avenue creates, spending time on Norfolk Avenue. So, I mean, I think that's a better argument if you're south of Norfolk Avenue than north of Avenue, north of Norfolk Avenue where this parcel we're talking about is. I mean, I want to be sensitive to what you're, what you're saying. I just don't know that it applies in that particular parcel.
Yeah, well, if we keep going like that, then we're gonna end up, if you look on the map, it's up at 15th Street. I don't think the one up on the screen shows it. It's going higher, going further north. Yeah, there you go, see? That's what we're starting to create down there in 13th Street, 12th Street, you know. It's incubating. It's sorta like the virus, you know?
It's gestating.
Well, it's hard. This is a bad year. The hotels right now are, what I know of, are operating less than 100%. So, everybody's kind of, they're, they're having some real struggles. So, it's kind of a hard, um, is this-
It's changing the, it's changing the neighborhoods.
It is. Mr. DeHaan, when we had that meeting earlier, was this one of the areas that does not fall into an overlay?
That's correct.
This is correct. So, this is one that potentially would have a difficult time being protected?
Or, or approved.
Huh, or, or approved?
Going with what was brought up or requested back by city council to consider, and I won't dive too far into this conversation, considering the overlay districts and allowing them in overlay districts, this area would be an area that would be outside of one of those areas that were identified, as potentially to be allowing short-term rentals. Again, that should not, that's a further, future discussion.
That's a further discussion. I was just trying to kind of, kind of get where it was located in the, absolutely.
Yeah, well, if everybody's like, really not on board with hearing it, and I would concede this, nobody's complaining, so let her go. I mean, the neighbors, they seem to be, they seem to be just fine with it.
Can I make one point to that? Because I've been thinking about this. So, go talk to all those dots. Those are your friends and neighbors. Those are the guys you see at the country club, the ones you're shopping with at Harris Teeter, all these people that are apparently changing the neighborhood for worse, and there's something to that. Don't get me wrong, I'm disagreeing with that, but they're not Martians. These are all people we know, and they're all people who are trying to exercise what they say are their property rights, and anytime you get into this debate, the guy who wants to make his own nickel off of it is gonna be every bit as loud as the one who doesn't like it. I've seen it before, you know, a long time ago when we started this R5R stuff on the both Shore Drive and at the Oceanfront, regarding changing these building standards. It was the North End Civic League that went crazy because people wanted to preserve their ability to have duplexes. They wanted to be able to cash in their chips from the house that their grandfather bought in 1940 or something like that, and then now they're gonna stand to make a million and a half bucks off of it. So, I mean, sometimes talk as though this, you know, there's some outside force imposing on that. Those are our friends and neighbors. Those are real people. So, if you see them in Harris Teeter, tell them they're doing something ill and wrong and all of that stuff. Otherwise, I think we're not, you know, we're just not being terribly honest about it. That's a conversation we gotta have much more than just in a big room, you know?
Right.
Next time your neighbor tells you, "I want to do one of these things," tell them he's wrong, if you think so.
Planning Commissioners, Will has some follow-up to your discussion if you'd like to hear from him now.
Sure.
Will, we're ready for you. Will, are you there now?
I just had to log out and log back in. I had lost the sound. I was just gonna add that there is, in August, 906 and 908 12th Street will be coming before Planning Commission. I didn't know if that would help with our conversation or not.
One more time? Is it two of them that he was saying?
Yes.
Yes, 906 and 908 12th Street.
Where are those?
Right next...
I mean, they're on 12th Street.
Right next door.
Right next door.
And next door to that. Or across the street.
Okay, well...
Oh, there you go. I'm... Thank you, Will, that's a...
Maybe nobody's complaining because they're all cashing in. I don't know.
Well, I don't... And again, this is an afternoon. Maybe we should... I'd like to talk about this. I'm with Mike. I'd like to talk about this, did I? At the formal.
So, we're gonna take it off?
I'm gonna take it off. I'd like to take it off of consent. I'd like to hear it. So, y'all can hate me later, but that's...
Later.
What, is that all right, Mike? Or no?
Am I understanding that Will said that people have written in, or they're gonna show up for the hearing?
Not for the...
Or do you... Okay, let me take the...
I mean, you have every right to want to hear it. Let's just hear it. If you want to hear it, then we'll hear it.
Okay.
But again, if we're gonna hear it, you're gonna contact the applicant, let them know we're gonna, in case they want to talk about it. Correct?
Will do. Madam Chair, that concludes the staff briefings.
It's a lot harder than we thought.
Never seen that before.
What?
Said, "Never seen that before." Harder than we thought it was gonna be.
Do you, real quick?
Yes, sir.
You guys want to go through these?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do a recap.
Do you want me to do it, or...
Go ahead, Mr. Weiner, if you want to walk through the...
On a consent, we're gonna hear 1, 3... I'm sorry, not here. On a consent, it's gonna be 1, 3, 4, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18. With number 9s being withdrawn, defer 2 for 30 days, 5 for 30 days, and 6 indefinite. And we're gonna hear 7, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 19. All right?
Thank you.
So, I need somebody to lead us in prayer. Does somebody like to do that? I actually have it today. Anybody want to do it for me, please?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Jack. And somebody to do the pledge.
I'll do it.
And somebody to introduce all of us.
Do I get a cheat sheet?
Sure. You can see us. Thank you, Robin, I appreciate it. And I guess that's it? Mr. DeHaan, is that all? All right. I'm gonna close. We're gonna close the informal. Thank you.